What is up party people? My name is Sage Lewis. This is the Sage Against the Machine podcast. And I hope to God it sounds better on your end than it does on mine because geez oh Pete, man, what a mess, what a mess. I don't know. I don't, I'm not sure I'm really cut out. I love technology. Audio, audio is this endless problem. It's just, I don't know. Anyways, um, if it's terrible, let me know. Because man, it sounds terrible in my, in my ears. Um, alright, so today ladies and gentlemen is uh, my, hey, Robin Everly, what is up my brother? What is up? Good to see you. I'm so glad you're here. Um, I'm having my fundraiser tonight. I'm trying to raise money for signs. Um, and uh, I think I'm gonna do it. I, I need about $1,500 to get 500 signs. That's my goal is $1,500 for uh, for uh, 500 signs. A sign is $3. So for every $3 I get, I get a sign. So you know, $10, three signs, $50 trillion signs? I don't know. I can't do the math. I can't do the math. Um, it's crazy. Uh, but um, no, I mean, $100, 33 signs, right? $500? I can't, no, I can't, 10 signs. I can't do it. I literally, I can't do the math. Fortunately, um, the, the uh, the um, world of, alright, how about that? I just don't even wanna listen to myself anymore. It's just so bad. I think it's, I think it's on my end. I'm not really sure. Oh, that, yeah, that is. I pulled out an old soundboard from my closet and I'm like, man, I wanna use that again. And then I think it needs to be cleaned. I don't know. I don't know if that's true, but maybe it does. I, wait, no. Yeah, I don't know. I really don't know. All I know is it's sounding like crap in my ears. Um, yeah, well, I wanted to do this, oh geez, forget it, forget it. Um, in fact, oh, yeah, you know what? You know what doesn't sound like crap? When I take my headphones off and I just listen to myself like a normal human. That's actually preferable. Um, and then, so yeah, so I've got this fundraiser tonight, but what I'm really finding is that I'm not so excited about the um, making money part as I am about the people coming together part. I'm just so into it and um, I realized that, oh, it sounds good? Oh, good, 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 good. Robin Everly says it sounds good. Alright, good. Well, that's fine. Um, so, you know, like, a campaign does need money, uh, for sure, but especially at the local level, it really, really needs community. And the longer I do this work, the longer I'm uh, working with homeless people or getting involved in the community and that sort of thing, um, I keep coming back to the fact that coming together is the answer. Coming together is what um, is the secret sauce of everything. Joey, hey, what's up, man? It's good to see you. What's up with you? Um, I, I think, so, there's a lot of violence in Akron and it's not just Akron. It's like, I think it's all these um, cities. I think it's all these cities. And I, somebody put out this idea that they were like, well, I think people are acting up. I think kids are, young people are acting up because um, I think they're acting up because of COVID. You know, they just kinda got desocialized and um, are just, you know, kinda bonkers right now. And I'm like, yeah, that's, that's it, that's it. It's COVID, it's COVID. But then the Beacon Journal put out an article and showed school violence, violence in the schools, and it was really high before COVID. It was on the rise before COVID. Then you have to be like, okay, so what was it? Um, what was it that created this um, violence if it wasn't COVID? So, you know, we had Black Lives Matter, I mean, a lot of uprisings with that. Um, you know, Jalen Walker was shot, like, eight police officers emptied their clips, eight, eight bullet clips emptied into one unarmed man. What happens? I, I'm, it's, it's impossible that it was eight bad people. Impossible. That, I mean, I, I think it's bad, I think that's impossible, like, I'm gonna go hunt me a black guy tonight. Said none of them, said none of them. But man, they chased this guy down and they just emptied their clips into him. And I feel like there should be a more nuanced discussion about this instead of like, fuck the police or blue lives matter. It's like, what good does that do? It's like, go Browns, no, go Broncos, no, go Bengals. It's like that. It's like, like you're, you're playing, your team. Meanwhile, people are dying. These cops are uh, you know, I, I don't know, are they terrified? I don't know if they're terrified. I don't know. I honestly don't know. But I know that they don't want their uh, names to be uh, put out there. We're not allowed to get their names. Um, I think that the police chief made an announcement or made just a, you know, just out of the blue, is like, hey, you don't have to give your names anymore as police officers in Akron, Ohio. Um, and the reason is because everybody's afraid or angry, angry and afraid. And I think they're the same emotion, aren't they? Like, isn't anger and fear just the same thing? Um, I sorta feel that that's the case, that um, it's just different manifestations of the same thing, which I think ultimately is fear. I think fear is the brute, the, the, the root, and then a lot, for some people, it manifests into anger, you know? Um, I think, I think, um, I get really angry, but I don't think I get angry because I'm fearful. I think, you know, you can obviously get angry without being afraid. I mean, that's obvious, right? I mean, that's a thing, right? So, um, so like, yeah, I mean, why aren't we having those conversations? Like, where are the, where are the psychiatrists? Where are the studies? Where is the, like, and maybe those are happening behind the scenes, but they aren't. They're certainly not happening in the public dialogue. It's either blue lives matter or fuck the police. That's like, or, those are the engaged people. Those are the people that actually care. And then I think most people are like, ah, whatever, man, I got other things to do. I gotta pay bills and, you know, I think that's most people. So the, the engaged people are just like rooting for their team, you know? And where is anybody like, just like, hey, man, why did they shoot eight times? Well, they were afraid for their lives. Well, why? Why were they afraid for their lives? Well, you know, there was a guy with a ski mask, he's running, he fired a shot out of his car, what they said. And maybe that's it, maybe that's it. Um, great questions, Drifon. So, let's, let's uh, let's, let's do that, shall we? Let's go over here and uh, let's see, um, Atlanta, let's get everybody on the same page. Atlanta State Police. I would like to know your thoughts, Drifon, while I, uh, killing Forrest, whoops, Forrest Defender. That's what we're calling him, right? The Defor, um, so, here, let's, let's go here. The killing of Forrest Defender Torta Guita, I think? Tortu Guita? I'm sorry if I'm, I know I'm not saying that right. Public outrage, um, resistance and sadness at the senseless killing of a Forrest defender. 26-year-old Manuel Tehran, known as Little Turtle Torta Guita, oh, I love it, Torta Guita, continues daily since their death on the morning of January 18th. The police story that Tehran fired first at a Georgia state trooper, one of a dozen of heavily armed police, one of dozens of heavily armed police raiding the encampment of the Wallenee Forest, has been met with universal disbelief by those who knew the young activist. No way did he have a gun. From people that said they knew Little Turtle. Likewise, others well acquainted with the false narratives supplied by police, other, look at that, likewise, others well acquainted with the false, with false narratives supplied by police to justify their illegal actions will say the names of Catherine Johnson, Anthony Hill, Jamarien Robertson, Jimmy Atchinson. Uh, when they were killed, the police account was proven untrue. I think it is fair to say that uh, sometimes police lie when they're caught in a bad situation. Torta Guita, a non-binary person of Venezuelan heritage, has been engaged, had been engaged for many months in building a resistance in community with other defenders and neighboring residents in the forest, forested land owned by Atlanta but located in DeKalb County. Just days before their killing in another early morning raid by police agencies on December 13th, six people sheltering in treehouses were sprayed with tear gas and shot at with pepper balls to force them down. They were arrested and charged with domestic terrorism and initially allowed no bail. A seventh person driving by in a car filmed the scenes, was later arrested as well. Hmm, just driving by. Officials from the Atlanta Chief of Police to Mayor Andre Dickens to Governor Brian Kemp have repeatedly used the word domestic terrorism to vilify uh, the, the movement to stop Cop City. Solidary events have been held in multiple cities across the US to mourn and remember the life of Torta Guita. The struggle erupted in the closing months of Mayor Kayla Lance Bottoms' term in 21 when she abruptly announced she was going to run for a second term. Week later, without any public notice, the Atlanta Police Foundation was given use of the land to uh, to, oh wait, the Atlanta Police Foundation was given use of the land to build an enormous $90 million police training facility, complete with a helicopter port, a mock city to practice cow control and urban warfare tactics, firing ranges in area, I think they had built the mock city. They thought that the mock city was already built in the trees and so they were practicing their warfare. Just kidding, I'm just kidding. Barring ranges in area to, uh, to practice using explosive devices, numerous buildings, cement parking lots, roads, completely ignored was a 2017 council resolution declaring the areas a green space in perpetuity. Okay, do you guys get it? Have we all gotten it? Have we all gotten it? Alright, Drifon says, it's tragic all around. They were a beloved, Little Turtle was a beloved, but beloved by local activists. As for Memphis, they're looking to release the body cam footage tomorrow afternoon. Five bad apples in a bunch or a bad bushel. Right, okay. So, Drifon, I don't know how well you know me, but for the last seven years, I have been trying to shelter homeless people on my private property in a seriously depressed area of Akron. And it is to the point now where if I have, if I put, me personally, this is just a sage law, just a sage law, if I put one tent on my land, I face jail time and fines, okay? Okay? So, I have a very hard time with the system, okay? I believe the system only does one thing, protect the system, okay? I believe that the system is only comprised of two motivations, money and power. You protect the system so the people inside the system, the little system clique, get the money and the power. And anything that jeopardizes that little ecosystem is a domestic terrorist. You see? It is domestic terrorism to even so much as question the system. You will be met harshly by all members of the system if you dare even so much as just tap on the system a little bit and be like, excuse me, system, I would like a place to sleep. No! No, I say, no! I'm sorry, but this, this guy Sage said that you could camp on his land. Yes, he will go to jail if you camp on his land. So, you know, you decide. I was just reading, um, the, the 16, what is that? The, the New York Times, what is that? The 1619 Project? Coming out on Hulu. You know the 1619 Project? Um, they just, they just wrote about it. So I'm excited to see this. This is on Hulu. Um, and anyways, I don't, I just read it. But the interesting thing about it was, and basically, the 1619 Project, if you're not familiar with it, it's the idea that, that the New York Times, I believe, is the one who invented this, basically said they think that, that America should start at 1619, which was the first slave ship to come to America. But what I, and I was reading from, I don't know, one of the writers or something earlier today about it, and he's like, you know, this, you know, is focused on slavery, but slavery expands to many more people than just black slaves. And he gave a, a point where he said, you know, low-income white people were suffering at the hands of these landowners as well. But what they cunningly did was, they gave the poor white people some, some more baubles, like, I forget, like more voting rights, more something. They were like, hey, man, you're part of the, you're part of the, you're part of us. The rich guys were saying that to the poor guys, the poor white guys. And so they set up this brilliant thing where the poor white guys felt like they could get into the clique of the rich white guys as long as they were just like, yeah, screw those, screw those, um, screw those, those, those slaves, those black people, black people suck, says the poor white guys in hopes to get in with the club of the rich white guys. And I feel like that's been going on ever since, that poor white guys have just desperately wanted to be uh, paid attention to by rich white guys. And they'll do, I, I feel like, they're like, yeah, man, I love the rich white guys and screw those black people. And so, I sorta feel like, um, um, oh, I thought there was something else. Okay, um, the, I think the system plays us against each other. And is that obvious, right? I mean, but I don't think it is obvious. Like, you would know, I mean, you could, you could intellectually say that, but then just look at how we've divided ourselves. 50% of the country hates the other 50% of the country, you know? Conservatives hate liberals and liberals hate conservatives. And so, and again, it's the powerful, the power elite that have done that, that they have created this massive evenly divided war against each other. And I sorta feel like it goes even beyond just Democrats and Republicans, which I think create a huge, huge problem in, in society. I, I, I would like to see more parties or no parties. No parties would be great, the greatest, I think. Um, because partyism, partyism is just like, I'm this party, what are you? I'm that party. Okay, then fine. Because like, for example, now, here I go on a tangent, I gotta remember where I was. But like, I was just talking to a person yesterday and they're like, you know, so-and-so on city council changed from a Republican to a Democrat just so they could get on city council. And I'm like, wow, that sorta sucks, because now you don't know. I mean, you think they're a Democrat, but in reality, they're a Republican. I'd like to see all their voting records. I'd like to see every president, I'd like to see every vote they've ever done. Screw their uh, finances. I wanna see who they vote for, what I wanna see. Um, so, it's not even Democrats and Republicans, that doesn't even matter as much as, as long as the system stays intact and the system stays running by the rich, powerful people. And I think it's, you know, a lot of times, like, uh, you know, like, Kanye was whining about Jewish people in um, Hollywood and I'm like, that's petty bullshit. That's not even, no, 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 no. It's not Jewish people that are running America. It's, no, that's just tiddlywinks kinda playing there. It's, it's way, way bigger than that. Uh, Drifon says, did you see the governor's talking about minting a trillion dollar platinum coin to fix our debt limit? I did read about that, yeah. I don't know, the government is, yeah. I, I don't know how serious that is. I think that sucks. Um, and isn't that interesting? See, Drifon, you're, you're talking about these, these really interesting points that come back to the overarching point is, who cares as long as we get to stay in power? You wanna set, like, who care? The system comes first. God bless the system of America, you know? And everything else be damned. Who cares what kind of effect minting a trillion dollar platinum coin would do to the economy? Would it increase inflation? The only reason they care about inflation is because it hurts them, because it makes their money weird. That's why they care about, I really think we have to keep an eye on the fact that they're always trying to keep us off of the system. And everything is meant to protect the system. And they do it intentionally. The racism, they stoke racism for white people to hate black people because it supports the system. They, um, you know, liberals are like, let's save the environment, you know, and that, like, it just is going to make more people rich. Barack Obama forced us to give more money, all the money to the private health insurances providers. They're all the insiders. They're all the same. I mean, some look cooler than the others, but like Barack Obama, I loved Barack Obama until I got a little more educated and then I'm like, fucked Barack Obama. He just terrorized the Middle East, propagated those wars, uh, just launched these, these insane drone attacks on innocent civilians and screwed us, I think. He could've gotten us Medicare for all and he got us forced payment to uh, health insurance companies. Screw that. We were so in love with him and I think he fucked us. Now, I'm not saying healthcare.gov was all bad, not, I mean, there was really some good things about it, uh, like, you know, certain, like illnesses, like, you know, you can't just turn away people with, have certain, all that stuff. I'm not, I'm not saying it was the worst thing, but I know it's expensive. And that now, for my liberal friends, hang in there, what I'm about to say. I think the biggest reason the people on the right like Donald Trump, that they liked Donald Trump was because he was not that. He was not, now you, now I know, you see, you're triggering, just stop, I get you, I hear you, I hear you. He was a billionaire, but he was not in this political class. He was always kind of an outsider to that. And then on top of that, he catered to the evangelical movement and he delivered. He got the overturning of Roe v. Wade. I think you can, you can thank Donald Trump for that because he filtered our, you know, he filled our courts with these conservative judges. Uh, he got that, uh, what was that? The embassy thing moved to Jerusalem, they love that. And now they're kinda screwing him. I don't, I think, I think now they're over him, uh, which is sort of, kind of a shitty thing to do considering all that he did for them. Now, in reality, Donald Trump just is in love with Donald Trump. Donald Trump would've done whatever anybody would've done, would want him to do as long as he could be president. That's all he cared about. It's just winning, 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 winning. That's all he wants. He wants to win. Though Donald Trump doesn't really give a rat's ass about any policy, in my opinion, um, which makes him good for people that elect him and like, go get me this, alright, do I get to be president? Oh yeah, Donald, you be, you go do that and you'll get to be president, you know? I think that's all, I think, I think, I mean, that's how he looked like to me, you know? He's just super, super self-absorbed, uh, couldn't be anything other than himself. And that's why he thinks that the election is overturned. I really, or it was fake, or, or whatever, corrupt. I think he believes it, because he can't imagine a world that wouldn't vote for Donald Trump. He loves Donald Trump that much. Nobody loves Donald Trump more than Donald Trump. But the idea was right, get an outsider in. And I think instead of just blanket hating Donald Trump, the left needs to think about how can we play into populism? And that's who I like to think of myself as. That's why I'm running for city council, um, because I believe if we don't get, if we, if, 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 if we just let the system, keep running the system like it is, this city will die. It will die. Because all they care about is shining a turd. They just parks and let's build some fancy, uh, condos without, and then meanwhile, we have Jalen Walker, who they're gonna, that is going to, um, that, uh, that Jalen Walker case is gonna be decided probably in April, right before the election. Okay, I think it'll be, maybe they'll hold it. Maybe they'll make it wait for after the primary. It'll be interesting to see. And I guarantee, I can almost guarantee you those cops are gonna walk away scot-free because of qualified immunity. We're not allowed, you're never allowed to, uh, you know? The only way you can accuse a cop of doing something illegal is if there was precedent of exactly the same thing happened before. And I'm talking the exact same thing. There was a black guy in a mask that got out of a car without a gun and there were eight police officers chasing him and he turned around and they shot him. It has to be that specific. Like literally, if it was seven police officers, they'd be like, well, there's no precedent for that. And, yeah, and then qualified immunity kicks in. Those cops are gonna go free. They're gonna get put back on the force and this town is gonna go to hell. And I'm telling you why, because I was talking to an activist leader who said, I'm not gonna tell him to stop throwing bricks. Like holy shit. I'm not gonna tell him to stop throwing bricks. You know? Because they're protecting the system at all costs. At all costs. And so then we come back, I'm gonna get to you, Jane, but then we come back to, whoops. Uh, DeFranz's thing, the Atlanta state police killing the forest offender. Okay? Um, you must uphold the system. You can't talk to that kid, that young person. You can't, you can't have a dialogue with those people. You can't work with them. You must make them bend to the will of the system. The system has spoken and thus it is so. And then this kid ends up, this young, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm old. This young person gets shot by police. Like me, my wife always says, she's like, man, if I was in Dan Horgan's cabinet, the first thing I would do is tell him to get Sage Lewis on a committee for homelessness and ask for reports and ask him to report on, do studies. And then just bury him in bureaucracy. And Sage Lewis being the guy that's so obsessed with daddy love all the time would do it. But no. They're like, now they're like, you put a tent on your private land, Sage Lewis, so help me, you're gonna go to jail. And I'm like, bring it, bring it, bring it. They're like feeding me. They're feeding me with this stuff. They make me stronger by not engaging me. They're making these forest defender people, they're making the activists stronger when this stuff happens. Because in their mind, you do not question the system. And you especially don't question a police officer's system. How dare you? How dare you? And I think, my friends, this is the new populism. And I would like to suggest that, um, yeah, and then DeFranz says, you gotta watch out now, might get called a terrorist. Right. I mean, what is a terrorist? Let's go look, let's go look. I haven't forgotten you, Jane. What is a domestic terrorist? A person who commits terrorist acts in their own country against their fellow citizens. Well, we, the, the people who raided the Capitol, I think would be uh, considered terrorists. Here's the FBI. Um, so yeah, like now these, these, these people that DeFranz is talking about, these forest defenders are being labeled as domestic terrorists. And then what people are, then people that just catch the, 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 the headlines are like, oh, don't forest, forest defender terrorists? I'm so afraid. Cause they don't, they just read headlines. But sure, sure. Um, this is what I want. So I, what I want, my dear leftist friends and my dear rightist friends, forget the labels they have forced on us. Forget the things that we disagree on and come together on the ninety percent of things that we do agree on. That the system is fucking us all, that it's getting harder and harder to pay our rent, that it's getting harder. The water bills in Akron are outrageous. That, 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 that rich people get everything and poor people get nothing. Think about that. Don't worry about, well, are you, are you, are you, are you a racist? Don't even ask. Do you believe in abortion? Shut up. Just shut up. That fucking shit doesn't matter. What matters is when we, the people unite against the system, we can make the system ours. We can make the system ours. And that, those words right there are the terrorist words. Not through violence, not through murder, just through coming together. We can make the system ours by coming together and voting and uniting and, 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 and working together. Do not let them divide us on petty bullshit that you think is important, that is not important. What is important is can you feed your family? Are your schools safe? Are you, are you, uh, 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 can you live in your own city without going bankrupt? The other stuff is just, just stories to make you hate half of the rest of the country. Get over it. Leave it alone. And these are the topics that do not come up because they don't, they don't help the system. And national media, corporate media on any level does not talk about this stuff because it does not help them. If it bleeds, it leads. That is all media cares about, to get you riled up one way or another. DeFranz says, Atlanta protesters downtown caught domestic terrorism charges on Saturday. Wow. Literally a typical riot. See, that's screwed up, man, because domestic terrorism, I'm sure comes with a lot of other heat. Uh, Jane says, strongly suggest you listen to Rachel Maddow's podcast, especially Ultra and the Bagman. Okay, I, I need to watch, I never, I didn't even know she had a podcast. Thank you, Jane. I will definitely, um, check that out. James Nolan, uh, lived at our tent community for quite some time and was a huge contributor to it. Mostly ran the clothing room, if I recall. I mean, I know that was a fact. I don't remember if you did other, I know he did other stuff, but spent so many hours a week in that clothing room to help people get clothes. Um, one of the great things I love about the homeless community is you can take a racist, a white racist, and they'll hang out with black people all day long. Because they're unified about one thing, surviving. Shannon Wilson in the house. Shannon is one of the smartest people I have, uh, I have come across here on the, on the, on the, on the beautiful Facebook. That's why I don't watch the news. Why do you think it's called programs? Yes. Yes, yes. Hey, you wanna go see some headlines? Let's go to, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do CNN. And then I'm gonna do Fox News. Okay? And I want you to try to keep an open mind about the agenda each is doing. Okay? Here we go. Attorney, one former officer has been indicted on the Tyree Nichols case. Okay? Look at there, standing up, the people. CNN leans left. Okay? Try to imagine this as intentional. That the, the, um, that the headlines on CNN are intentional here to get left-leaning people going. National Archives asks former president's vice president to check for classified and president, uh, presidential documents. That's kind of, because both sides are screwed up there. Uh, China's Northmoune City just saw its coldest day ever. Um, Razzi's apologized to 12-year-old for nominating her as the worst actress. That's over here. Oh, don't hurt 12-year-old, says the liberal elite. Um, uh, ooh, look at this though. ChatGPT passes exam at Ivy League Business School. That's crazy. That's crazy. ChatGPT is this, uh, artificial intelligence thing. Uh, there's not a lot of, okay, well, here we got Half Moon Bay suspect with coworker. That's that mass shooting. We love mass shooting. Here's some pets. Okay? FBI, FBI has seized website used by notorious ransomware. That's, yeah. This is not a great day to show, uh, uh, left-leaning, but look. Attorney for one of the five Memphis officers killed over the death of Tyree. So this is a left, this is the big report. Okay, hold on. I will not, I cannot show you the video. I cannot show you the video. So the Tyree, which I think, uh, DeFranz talked about earlier. So, um, so Tyree Nichols' death, family of Tyree Nichols got six murder charges for officers. The family of Tyree Nichols wants the officer to see him on video charged with murder. Family wants nothing but the absolute most charge they can bring and what they want are murder charges. Wow. There's no doubt that they want to see that, that I can relay to you. Family is clear that they want to see murder charges brought again. Both those officers, what I would support those charges would be brought. Okay, now, I know I have left people and right people here, okay? I think on the left,
We have this just in to CNN for the first time, we are hearing some audio from Memphis police scanners with a traffic stop involving Tyree Nichols.
Stop killing people all the time, police officers.
That everyone is waiting for to be released. Videos capturing how Tyree Nichols was beaten by police. Those videos have yet to come out. Let's get back to Memphis. Sarah Seider is standing by once again. Sarah, tell us about these police scanner recordings.
Basic tests on American, stupid, we're stupid.
Just have a section of it, um, that we were able to hear. Some of it's inaudible. There does seem to be some distress at some point. But we want to let the audience hear it themselves. Um, you know, as you know, Tyree Nichols, uh, was killed. He died on January 10th after being pulled over on the 7th, uh, for what police at the time said was reckless driving. And somehow ended up getting beaten. And so we have now heard from the police chief and we have now heard from the family that that beating was absolutely inhumane. Five police officers have been fired. We are awaiting the potential of charges. We expect to hear from the DA at two. But what we have now is this dispatch audio, which is between the dispatcher and the police on the ground. I'd like you to listen to a section of it.
Are propagating, uh, non-binary, um, Sorry about that. I apologize. Um, see, that's why I don't, if I had my headphones on, I would know that, but I can't, my headphones are being wonky right now. Um, there's a huge thing on the right that, that the schools are being overrun by non-binary people. Um, Adam Schiff announces major, major political move, says democracy is at great risk. Okay? But do you see anything anywhere about this, uh, Trey, Tyree thing? You, you don't. And my only point is to Shannon's ultimate point is there's an agenda. It's not news. It's gossip to enrage us. We go to the news to enrage us because we're addicted to it. So that we can then hate half of society. And why? Why? Why do they do it, you ask? Because it keeps us divided and it makes the system more powerful. If poor white people and poor black people got together, which is something people have been trying to do forever and hasn't worked, system would be in trouble. System would be in trouble. So they divide us intentionally. They divide up our news to keep us separated so you can serve up news on the right to make it hate left people and put news on the left to serve it up to make people hate people on the right. Do you understand? Did I even say that right? You get what I'm saying. It's intentional. I need you to understand that they are baiting us and we take the bait every time. You are never going to see stories that are on, in, in, in corporate news that unite us. And even if you do, like the Crips and the Bloods get together, that'll go on, uh, Fox News and they'll be like, man, those no good inner city black kids need to get religion and dads. That would be like, I'm telling you, you have to look. Okay, if you don't, if you're like, well Sage, what can I do? I want to know. I, I wanna know the news. I would like to suggest you go over here. The Reuters. You will spend 10 minutes here and never go back. Because it is real news. A Russian graveyard reveals Wagner's prisoner, prisoner? I don't even know what that is. U S says it hacked the hackers to bring down ransomware gang. Uh, Drogon thrusts NATO expansion issues into Turkey 10th election campaign. U S economy posts strong growth in Q4, but on, with underlying weaknesses. You're not even seeing, they're not like, did you see Biden? Did you see Trump? Israeli troops kill seven Palestinian gunmen. Uh, two civilians in, uh, Jen and Klash Palestinians say. Now that looks a little propaganda-y. Because why would you ask the Palestinians? Why would you ask the Palestinians? That makes me suspicious of you Reuters, Reuters. Boeing pleads not guilty to fraud charge on 7/37 mask arraignment. Morgan Stanley penalizes employees as much as $1 million for WhatsApp breaches. Damn. See, now there is news. You want news, go to Reuters. If you want to be zombified, go to CNN and Fox News and Facebook and TikTok and Twitter. And you will be, your brain will be, uh, brainwashed. You will be brainwashed. You will, because it is so hard to constantly be questioning this. It is so difficult to, um, always be analytically, um, mindful of this. Jane says, I get texts from Joe Biden. His most recent was asking for the improved economy has been good for me. I was like, who is it good for? Not the people I know. Exactly. I get the Donald Trump emails too. I just like to know what people are talking about. Um, Joe Biden will not win. And the system will promote Joe Biden. The, 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 the Democrat system. And we're gonna get, I think we're gonna get that DeSantis guy. Um, I can't, well, let me tell you something. The economy has been good for me for a long time. It was great for me in COVID. I just kept getting those free checks. My kid got a free, they were sending out, uh, food cards to every kid in public schools. He was just buying crazy crap, lobsters. One friend of his bought a lobster on his food card and took it home to try to make it a pet. He's like, I'm gonna save that lobster. I don't know if it lived or not. I don't know if it lived or not. Um, wasteful, 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 wasteful. Um, and before you're like, yeah, liberals suck. I was talking to a guy who spent 20 years in the Navy. He said that on his ship during every, I don't know, I don't know, every half year or whatever, they threw um, supplies over um, supplies overboard into the ocean so that they would have to order more supplies. Because if they didn't order the supplies, they wouldn't get the budget for next year. And he was talking like crazy amounts of stuff. Just threw it overboard into the ocean. He saw it. He saw it. Sorry about that, uh, video thing, DeFranz. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, no, I wasn't, no, I just, I, my headphones aren't working right, I apologize, can't hear you, so sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry, everyone. Shannon says, uh, in, in, uh, intentional ignorance. Jamie Piper says, they need to reinstitute the Fairness Act. Of course, they never will happen, I don't know what the Fairness Act is. Uh, fairness doctrine, says, the fairness doctrine enforced by the federal FCC rooted in the middle. Lawmakers being concerned that the monopoly audience controlled, control of the three main networks, NBC, ABC and CBS could misuse their broadcast license to bias public agenda. Wow. The fairness doctrine mandated broadcast networks devote time to contrasting views on issues of public importance. Wow. Wow, where'd that go? The doctrine stayed in effect and was enforced until Ronald Reagan. 85 under Chairman Mark Fowler, a communications attorney, served under Ronald Reagan calf. Uh, the FCC released reports stating the doctrine hurt the public interest and violated free speech. There you go. We, uh, Fowler began rolling the application of the doctrine back during Reagan's second term by complaints from some in the administration. I don't know, was it, uh, Ronald Reagan? Did he, you know, he's a free mockery guy. Pretty interesting gunman. All people need to unite, please. When somebody baits you with a topic like abortion or, uh, LGBTQ or religion and you know it's not gonna go well, you're not gonna change their mind, okay? You gotta know that. If you know, and this is like a person that's new in your life and you, you got a sneaking suspicion that it's gonna go south, just change the topic. Change the topic about, um, what are some good topics? Like, um, the economy, that's a good one. They're saying the economy is great, but who's it great for? That's a good one. Uh, use it or lose it is a government motto, yeah, it's terrible, right? I mean, and look, no one in the government ever questions the military budget, no one, no one, no one, no one. That is a third rail that no one dares touch and no one's auditing that stuff. I'm not saying, like, could we work more on government, like, uh, waste? How much money could we spend to save if we just worked on government waste? Like, hey, let's not cut back any budgets right now, we're just gonna take away the money that you wasted. Instead of, how about this? Instead of hiring 80,000 IRS agents to come after us, why don't we hire some auditors to go after them? Oh, oh, that'll never happen. Cause you don't question the system. The system knows best, the system is all, always right. We have to wake up to this truth that we're being played by everybody. They're all lying to us. All of them. When you go on CNN, you go on Fox News, you go on Twitter, you go on Facebook and you're served up, uh, news that you just love, you're being played. Fairness doctrine required both sides to be reported on, that's why you used to see lively debates on Meet the Press and other shows, yeah, wow. That's a shame. That, I didn't know anything about that, Jane. Um, and that is, that's screwed up, that's really screwed up. No doubt about it. All right, um, so to sum up, this is going to be my overarching program is connecting all the people. The rich people with the poor people, the white people with the black people, the east side with the west side, the north side with the south side. Just people on your block. I think we need to have block groups and there needs to be a block captain. And you should just go on, just on the block. Like on my block, it'd be like Pershing 1. It's just the, this first section of Pershing. And you go around and you hand out flyers, you just print them off on your printer, you hand out flyers to the houses, the, whatever it is, the dozen houses on your block and you're like, hey, we're gonna get together on blah, 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 we're gonna just talk about blah, blah, blah. We must come together because technology is dividing us and it is making the system more powerful and more rich. It benefits the system to keep us divided. Please understand that. That is why I think I should be the next, uh, councilperson of Ward 8 in Akron, Ohio. Because I am going to bring people together. I do it in the homeless community, I can do it in Ward 8. Okay? We gotta bring the people together, we gotta unite the people against the system because the system in Akron, in Ohio, in the United States of America is against the people. It is for the system, by the system, of the system, for the system. I'll have to work on that, but it's clever, right? You got me, right? You gotta admit. People, I gotta go, I gotta get ready for my, my doodad. If you can come, please come. It's at, uh, hold on. If you can come, you don't have to, um, you do not have to. Okay, wait, DeFranz, hold on, I got, okay, yeah. So you probably watch the city council meetings, yes, I do. In order to spend the emergency funds, they have to declare an emergency. Wow, if elected, you'll attempt to get the city council to follow. Yeah, everything, have you watched this, DeFranz? But, um, everything in declaring an emergency, in declaring emergency, that's gonna be like my number one question. What is this and why is it always an emergency? Because everything is in declaring an emergency. How many people have to vote to make this in declaring an emergency? That's a great point, DeFranz. I'm gonna figure out this declaring an emergency bullshit. I think they do that so they can skip all the government part of governing and they can just do whatever the hell they want. I have a number one on my list when I get in there, I'm gonna be like, question? What is this declare an emergency thing? Why is everything an emergency? What I wanna know. Hold on. Will you attempt to get city council to follow the rules, the citizens vote? Yes, yes, I swear to God, get me in there. Yeah, it's pretty, there's some, there's some crazy crap that goes on in city hall that people don't know about. They declared an emergency to thank the fire department, yeah. Well, what is this? Like, I think it's so that you can get, like, you can get things through? And if everything is declare an emergency, then we either need to get rid of the, like, it's stupid and bypass this emergency thing or everything can't possibly be an emergency. It's impossible, impossible. But I honest to God, I know exactly what you're talking about, DeFranz. I don't know what the hell this emergency thing is and I'm gonna, I'm fixing to find out if I get in there, all right? Oh yeah, wait, here, look, come, I'm at Mercedes Tavern. Uh, hold on, I can't spell. Wanted to link to it, oh yeah. Mercedes Tavern, night from 6 to 8. Anyone can come. I'm really excited because, um, Mercedes Tavern, just Google it, it's on the West Akron behind CVS, uh, it's in Ward 8. And, uh, it's super cool, it's owned by this older lady who has been a bar owner forever. She's super cool, they got a super awesome jukebox, they got a super awesome, uh, pool table. I'm picking up like as many homeless people as I can stuff in my truck. Maybe I can put more in my, my wife's car. No, it's about the same, that don't matter. Just come, please come. You don't have to buy anything, uh, you don't have to have a ticket. If you wanna donate, you can, I'm gonna have some of my books. Can buy a book, I'll sign it for you. I'm gonna charge $20 above donation. Those are my, just so you know, those are my, I bought those copies, they're my copies. Uh, you give me a $20 or more donation at the, inside the bar and you get a book and I'll sign it. Come on, show up. All right, people, I love you, I love you, I love you, I love you so much, I believe in you so much. You are the reason I fight because you deserve people to fight for you. You, honest to God, are the hands and feet and heart of God. I see it every day. You are good, you blow me away. All right, bye.